Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 26, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting for the Kitsap Regional Library. I am President Eric Fong. With me are fellow trustees Marwan Cameron and Eric Sisney is, I'm sorry, is Monica, Monica? Oh, okay. We have Monica and Vice President Gina Steiner out on excused absences. So we will go to the Kitsap Regional Library mission statement. And in lieu of Monica, Marwan, could you read this, please?
Inspiring curiosity and connection.
Thank you. And we'll go to Jason for welcome and introductions.
Good evening. Welcome. And tonight, the usual suspects, Executive Assistant Tammy Jeffries. We also have intern Vanessa Bolio, Deputy Director, Chief Financial and Operating Officer, Dan Baer, Deputy Director of Public Services, Shannon Peterson, Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, Wendy Kyle, and last but not least, Mike Rose, the Director of Facilities Management and Information Technology. Excused tonight is our Director of Strategy and Communications, Jeannie Allen. And special guests, we are pleased to reintroduce Vanessa, who's here in the capacity of giving a mission moment, along with Grace Crowley, who will be presenting shortly. And we have support from the foundation. We've got Alyssa here as well to show support. Thank you.
Jeannie deserves a break, so good for her. No additions or changes to the agenda. There is no public comment. So we'll go to item six, Consent Agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. In the consent agenda are 6.01, minutes of the July 22, 2025 regular board meeting, 6.02, payment of July 2025 expenditures, and 6.03, surplus library materials withdrawn from the collection for July 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Second?
A second.
Discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. We will go to agenda item 7.01, Mission Moments, Community Jobs Intern Program. Vanessa and Grace, welcome and thank you for being here. The floor is yours.
While they set up, I'm just going to give a quick overview. And we have been nice pitcher there. Just wanted to talk about this mission moment. I think it's very special for me because they're all special, but just because I've seen the kind of iteration of this jobs program with Vanessa being here and just being a part of the process from interviews up until now, it's really gratifying to see not only that, but you know, it has been just a pleasure to watch how this partnership really has provided meaningful work experience for Vanessa. I hope that that's the case, and I'm not just projecting that. But I think from what I've absorbed and the folks I've talked to within the foundation offices and within admin, Shannon, Wendy, and all the folks who work in that section have just found it delightful to work with not only Vanessa, but to coordinate with Grace too. It's been an absolute pleasure. And then when we talk about, you know, supporting the community, this is part of what that's about, this idea of workforce development, it's a continuum, right? And so it, for me, it always starts at an early age, you know, just regular communication skills or skills that are needed at work. But not only that, providing tangible opportunities like this have been, really supports and strengthens our community. So having said all that, take it away.
Great. Thank you so much for that introduction, Jason. I couldn't agree more with everything around workforce development. So this is primarily Vanessa's presentation here. I'm just here to give a little bit of an intro to the program. So this is Community Jobs at Kitsap Regional Library, A Pathway to Opportunity. My name is Grace Crowley. I am an employment case manager with Track Associates, and I run the Community Jobs Program here in Kitsap County. So what is Track Associates? Who is Track Associates? It's a company based primarily out of Seattle, but functions all throughout Western Washington. We support job seekers and employers in finding the right fit for people to work long-term, unsubsidized work. We're a work-first partner that facilitates participation for individuals in the workforce, work-first program, who for one reason or another are having challenges finding long-term unsubsidized employment. Track Associates has around 70 employees, with 55 of those being employment specialists of a variety of different titles. We are co-located throughout the region in different physical spaces. So those could be work-first offices, community service offices, like the DSHS building that I'm in here in Bremerton, different colleges. We have employment specialists, certified mental health counselors. We have vocational rehab counselors. We have individuals working in reentry, our primary population. On the other side of the water are refugees, asylum seekers, English language learners. And our staff are exceptionally multicultural. They know dozens of different languages. Very, I'm very impressed with our staff, and I think very highly of the people that I work with. And overall, we assist all job seekers in, again, achieving their personal employment goals while also supporting employers in Western Washington to find the right fit for them. Work First is probably something that most of you already know about, so I'll just go quickly through this, but it's Washington State's welfare-to-work strategy that was implemented in the 1990s. It is based on the belief that everyone has the abilities to provide for Washington's workforce, and it sees work as the foundational building block to assist families in getting off welfare in that long-term self-sufficiency. The programs that Track Associates runs in Kitsap County that we'll be talking about today are Community Jobs, which Vanessa is a part of, Community Works, Career Jump, and then also we run BFAT as well for a short period of time, which is basic food employment training. So all of these jobs or all of these programs provide transitional, community-based employment and related training. So these could be in a variety of different types of work. So Vanessa's here at the library. We have folks at Habitat for Humanity. We have people working with animals, really all different kinds of skills, working on both hard skills and soft skills. So like what Jason was talking about on the, you know, basic discussion level, just getting to know people and having conversations and being able to show up regularly to a commitment. These are some of the organizations that we partner with here in Bremerton. And Community Jobs is the first program that we'll be talking about, and it's eligible for people who are receiving TANF, so it's temporary assistance for needy families. Individuals can be part in the program for up to nine months, and during that time, they are working 20 hours a week exactly at different, at one nonprofit. So generally, they're working the entire nine months at the same nonprofit, although they are able to change if things aren't working out. Our company, Track Associates, pays the individual minimum wage, so that's $1,666 here in Kitsap County this year, to work at those nonprofits. And while they're working, they're receiving case management and support services from myself. And every participant has an individual development plan. So it's very goal-focused, and with the rest of their time, they're focused on barrier removal. That could be getting a GED, English Language Learning, that could be taking a class at Olympic College, so a variety of different things for barrier removal, maybe learning how to take public transit. So whatever it is that they need that's getting in the way of full-time unsubsidized employment. Next, we have Career Jump, and similar, same population, so individuals who are receiving TANF. Instead of the nine months at a nonprofit, this is up to 240 hours at a for-profit company. And also, instead of paying minimum wage, we pay the prevailing rate. So if that company hires people at $32 an hour, then we're going to pay that individual $32 an hour until they're hired. And the cinch point in this one is really that because we're subsidizing the payroll for a for-profit company, they have to guarantee that they will hire that individual at the end of the 240 hours. So it's guaranteeing this long-term, full-time, it has to be a full-time hire at the end of the program. And again, case management and support services. And I have Dano Septic up there because they've been a great partner with us in providing that service to our community. And then lastly, we have Community Works, which is very similar to Community Jobs. Almost everything is the same, except it's for people who aren't quite ready to have a commitment of going to work every day. They might not have ever worked in their life before, or maybe they are having extenuating circumstances that is preventing them from really being able to be consistent. And so this is up to 20 hours. Some people work five hours a week, some people work 10 hours a week, and it's not paid, but they receive a stipend after three months and a stipend after six months. And a lot of people end up working a month or two in the Community Works program before transitioning into a Community Jobs program. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Vanessa and let her get the stage.
Thank you.
Yeah. And there, you all should have a packet of information that is a little more thorough on these programs, so feel free to take a look there.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees and leadership team. My name's Vanessa Bolio, and I'm honored to be here today as a Community Jobs intern for both the Director's Office and the Foundation at Kitsap Regional Library. Today, I'd like to share a brief glimpse into my experience as part of the Work First Program and how it's helped me grow professionally and what I've learned during my time here. And most importantly, how Kitsap Regional Library has played a vital role in opening doors for me. This internship has not only given me hands-on experience as an administrative assistant, but it's also shown me the power of mentorship, trust, and community. I'm deeply grateful for the opportunity to contribute to the library's mission while building skills that will shape my future. So this slide is a brief description of how I came to this program and why I'm here today. And I decided after 20 years in the retail industry that I needed to transition my career into something that was long-term and would give me gainful employment where I could apply my strengths in organization, communication, and operations. So to do that, I returned to school and earned my Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration. I focused on project management, and I am proud to say that I graduated cum laude, cum laude, in 2024. And I did this so that I could provide for my son as a single mother and to gain real-world experience in an industry that I had never been in before. I was blessed and lucky enough to be selected for the Workforce Community Jobs Internship Program and pass the interview with the leadership team and start this new chapter in my journey. And so this is a picture of the Director's Office of Jason, Autumn, myself, and Tammy. I was invited to participate in the very eventful Staff Day, and I was lucky enough to sit at the table with Eric Sisney, who gave me an education on the levy, so I appreciate that. Thank you. And what I did at the Director's Office was several projects and tasks were assigned to me. And the internship experience I had to acquire professional skills in the Director's Office was working on records management and digital organization. And also, that is, I gained hands-on experience with digitizing historical documents and adhering to the Washington State Records Retention Schedule, the CORE and the DAN, so learning about that and how important it is for preserving these types of records and making them accessible to everyone. Another task that I was assigned was to provide, review and update the internal SharePoint resource for accuracy and clarity and provide recommendations to improve staff access through more inclusive and accessible language. And that was going through explaining how the CORE and the DAN are relatable to everyday tasks and everyday communications. And another task that I was assigned was coming to the board and helping to set up and go over the process from start to finish so that all board meetings run seamlessly and also working on documenting the existing procedures and learning how to take minutes, which is something I've never done before, aside from note-taking in college. So I have learned a lot in this role and in this position. And then this is a picture of me. My second internship part in the leadership team was the Director's Office and also the Foundation. So I got to see two sides of the same coin and really see how both are necessary for the library to survive and thrive. And my internship experience with the Foundation, again, I was assigned a lot of tasks of things I had never seen or done before, but I was taught mostly by Alyssa, and she's here today in the audience to support me. So in the Foundation, I learned how to review and organize sponsor data into Excel spreadsheets to support fundraising programs. I also learned how to update donor profiles in the program Razer's Edge database to ensure completeness and accuracy. I also assisted with audit preparation by organizing files for auditors and refilling documents post-audit. I learned to digitize the Foundation's contribution records. I was tasked with, starting with 2024 and working my way backward, they have, it's a big closet of files, and I'm working through it as fast as I can. Another thing that I did that I was grateful to participate in is the Summer Learning Program. We were lucky enough to get over 5,000 prize books, and I got to see every single one because I was tasked with putting the personalized sticker that Alyssa and the Foundation made into those books. And I got to spend some of my time in the CTS department, working back there. And out of all 5,000 books, my son chose a book about slugs. I tried to encourage him. I was like, get one about the orcas. And he's like, no, Mom, I want the one on the slugs. So that's, that's what he chose. And I stickered it, so that was pretty cool. And then my chapter of growth, the lessons that I've learned from the library are a lot. I learned, well, I gained confidence in working in a professional environment, coming from retail, very different atmosphere. And I learned how to balance independent tasks with team collaboration. And this experience helped me to discover my strengths in organization, administrative management, and maintaining strong workplace, workplace ethics. Through hands-on work, I was able to clarify my career goals and better understand where my interests truly lie. And most importantly, I felt empowered by contributing to a mission-driven organization where my work had purpose, well, has purpose, and aligned with the organization's culture, the Kitsap Regional Library culture. And then I would like to thank the board for your time and for inviting me to share my journey as an intern. Your support made this experience possible. And I'd like to thank the leadership team. I'm deeply grateful for your partnership with Track Associates and the Work First Program. Your commitment to creating opportunities truly makes a difference. And I'm very grateful to the Foundation for your dedication to the library's mission and for welcoming me into your world of impact and generosity. And I would also like to thank the KRL team and employees. Your kindness, mentorship, encouragement helped me grow both professionally and personally. I felt valued every step of the way. The library at Sullivan Way is a maze in the back behind the library, and there, when I first started, I was told that I might get lost in there. It's a labyrinth, and I've had a lot of, everybody working at that library was very kind to me when I lost my way and would help me get back to admin. And every single person working at the library that I encountered would always have a smile on their face, say hello, and address me by my name. And I'm very bad with names, but they all know mine, and I'm still learning theirs. And with that being said, with heartfelt appreciation, this internship has been more than a learning experience. It's been a very meaningful chapter in my life, and I thank you for believing in me. And if anyone has questions, I'd love to answer them.
Thank you very much for sharing, Vanessa. It's been great to work with you. And the one thing that I'll say with my first impression was that you cared very much and you wanted to do a good job. And that's the kind of teammate that I really like to work with, so I appreciate you bringing your best in all aspects, from, you know, the organization to just, you know, seeing your smile and your enthusiasm, you know, another reminder of why we're here and what we do. So thank you for everything. Just to put you in the hot seat for a minute, do you have any suggestions or ideas for the library from your experience? Besides turning Sylvan Way into an escape room? Be a good one.
I didn't know that the library had so much more to offer than, and I don't want to say just books, because I'm a bibliophile, and books in the library is my life and always has been and always will be, but I didn't realize that the library has so much more to offer than just simply going in and checking out a book and that there's so many different programs. I, I'm from San Diego, and I do not remember my library ever having all of these events and a summer learning program with events and guest speakers and lots of community engagement and lots of activities, things that I would never have associated with the library. So my suggestion would be is, well, advertising, but I would, I would say Jeannie's not here and I don't, like, I, I just, coming out of COVID and being afraid to go anywhere and with everything changing and then realizing that the library was a place where I could bring my son, who was a toddler at the time. And for me, libraries have always been a place of quiet and not for children. And on my tour that I was given with the Foundation, Alyssa gave me a tour of all nine branches, I got to see firsthand how children are so integral to the library's foundation and culture and that they are the roots. And every single library catered to the children, and so that made me feel that bringing my son, that this was a place where I could bring him, and it wasn't a place where I felt like he couldn't talk or speak or have the desire to learn and explore, much like a children's museum. Granted, there's still areas for the, you know, the non-children, but, so, yeah. Sorry, I'm getting nervous.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the feedback. Any other questions, comments?
I, I would like to, you really got it right when you said enthusiasm. Vanessa brings a lot of enthusiasm, and her capacity to learn has just been astounding. And she wants to get it right, and she does. She does it right. And she keeps on it. She sticks with it, and we really appreciate her upbeat attitude every day and the enthusiasm that goes with it. You just, you can get that.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you.
We wouldn't have got any of this done without you.
All right. Thanks. Any, anything else? Yeah, Marwan.
You shared a tremendous list of skill acquisition. Now that you're at the, at the end of this, what are your long-term goals? What would you like to do? Because you can do anything.
Thank you. Originally, I planned on going into project management in the tech industry, and I, I actually enjoy business administration, and I also like seeing what the nonprofit side does. So I'm probably more likely than not going to pursue my career in business administration. Eventually, I'll go back and get my master's in business.
All right.
I'll just, if I could, I'll just add, I, I want to, I'm kind of echoing both what Tammy has said and what you said, Eric, but it has been absolutely fantastic having Vanessa in the Foundation. She's been able to advance a lot of work, and not only has it been excellent for her, you know, being able to see the skills that she's developing, but also just a great opportunity for our admin assistant in the Foundation to really have that role of actually training and supporting someone in developing their skills and, and learning. So I think for both Alyssa and Vanessa, you know, there was a lot of learning and support, and it was a great experience overall for the Foundation, and we're going to be sad to say goodbye.
Thank you very much, Wendy. It's been a pleasure in both departments.
We'd ask for your favorite, but we're not going to put you on the spot. I think the only thing I can say, just to sum up what everybody else said, it, obviously it's been a positive experience for the organization. I think my only regret is that we don't have a position at the ready and that, you know, Vanessa would have to apply and hopefully that there's a match down the road because she's awesome, and it's hard to train somebody and to give them skill sets and to watch them flourish and then not have a way for them to keep growing. But I think what this does show us is that what we're doing around workforce development is scalable in some different areas and capacities, and I think that this is a facet of, like Vanessa talked about, all that the library has to offer. This is just one of those things that you'd never see from the outside. And so it's been really gratifying, I think, for all of us. I mean, we're all like, Vanessa is a grown woman, but I mean, I think for us to nurture, have nurtured her, we're like proud parents here. I can feel the emotion from everybody, and it's, it is bittersweet. You know, we were just commenting, we want to cry up here because it's, it feels like the end, but I think it's only beginning for you because I think, I would hope that the skill sets you've attained and the relationships are definitely going to be long-lasting for us, and hopefully that there's a connection that's been built that will always be here. So I just wanted to thank Grace in closing for the opportunity to share your talents with us, which is, you know, the mighty Vanessa Bolio. So thank you for the opportunity. It's been really, I think when you're involved in situations like this, the growth comes from both ways. I think we've learned a lot, and certainly it seems like you've learned a lot. And so I think from that aspect, it's been a bonus summer for us in a lot of different ways. So thank you. I want to appreciate you for the time you've given us as well and the patience you've shown us also. So thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
All right. Anything else? Thanks so much, Vanessa, for being here. You know how these meetings work, so you're welcome to stay. Okay. We'll go to agenda item 7.02, Board Member Okay, we'll go to Agenda Item 7.02, Board Member Updates. Does anybody have anything to share? Nothing to share? Yeah, Marwan? Nothing, okay. I don't have anything to share either, just sat on the sidelines and watched all the hard work that was put into the levy. So looking forward to hearing more about that. We will go to --
Eric, go.
Sorry.
Sorry. There we go, okay. So I missed July's meeting because I was traveling, but mid-July, I jumped on an airplane. And while I was on the airplane, I had the opportunity to talk with a fellow KSAP voter all about the levy. It was pretty darn exciting to be able to be on my way to Faro, Portugal, and talk to a fellow voter about the levy. So that was pretty exciting and able to share some things about, like Vanessa mentioned, how much more the library is other than books, right, and what the levy was doing. So just have to share that, because you never know where you're going to be able to talk to somebody about a random fact or piece of info or trivia and whatnot. So that was pretty exciting. And then also, while I was in Portugal, I had the opportunity to stand outside of a very famous bookstore. I don't know if you guys know of it, but it is the inspiration for Hogwarts. It's called La Varia Leo Bookstore, and I have a picture I could show you guys later. But I just, I was like, standing in there. It was beautiful and amazing, and all I could do was think about, wow, the library is so cool, and here I am in this great bookstore. So anyway, there's, however that relates to mission moments, I don't know, but I just wanted to share.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you for sharing. Okay, we'll go to 7.03, Long Range Strategic Planning Committee Report. Marwan, do you have an update for us?
I do. Quite a bit here to get through. So first, the CK Partnership Update. We're still waiting to update that agreement, working on establishing norms. Two big things that is also in the works is folding in the student accounts and also opportunities to serve remote students in areas like CEBEC. In Port Orchard, Jason is meeting with Rob, Mayor Rob, once a quarter and just waiting on construction to schedule those updates. There is an opportunity to go after the Library Capital Improvement Grant coming up this spring of 2026, up to $2 million with a match, and that project needs to be shovel-ready. As far as HR updates, there's two positions looking to fill at the top of Q4. One is the leadership position, and the other one is the CTS position. In regards to operation efficiency and capital projects, a lot happened this year. The Sylvan Way HVAC, the 80th anniversary, Polesville rewiring, Polesville parking lot the first half coming soon, the internet moving from DT Micro to the county, and then the Polesville Meeting Room and the locks for the community. The big one, the levy has passed. Woo! Big deal. And looking at, you know, how are we going to be the most efficient over the next seven to 10 years? So that is huge, really big deal. And one way that we're going to celebrate is Library After Dark, which is going to be on October 4th at the Sylvan Branch at 6:00 PM. So there's going to be a lot of fun for both kids and adults, so hopefully people will come out and celebrate Library After Dark. That's a big thank you to the community, because of course, we couldn't have done it without the community, and again, lots of fun. There is an Internal Staff Day on October 9th. And then for our Public Service Updates, the Summer Reading Program, again, is another big hit. Can't wait until 2026, so stay tuned. It's such a shame, you know, you want to appreciate what's happening in the moment, but you're always planning for what's next and what's next and what's next, and the library is always at the forefront of that. This year, the library also expanded their reach in different events that they attended. And so this weekend was the KSAP County Fair, so they're there engaging with the community, which is awesome. Couple major things, the middle school to the library is getting off the ground. The goal is to reach every sixth grader in the county, and that is kicking off this fall. And then also sharing our story. So there's been great partnerships with the community to work on sharing our story. Then in regards to hours, we have restored the last of the post-pandemic hours, and people are showing up on the evenings and Sundays. So Jason will talk more about that in his report. As far as the Polesville Meeting Room Project, that's coming along. There's asphalt repairs in Polesville as well that had to be split during to-cure time. So looking for the dates to seal, to do the seal coat, which will be the week of September 8th, to do the lower half and the staff parking, followed by a day of no traffic and then striping, and then the following week, they'll finish the parking lot. And then Polesville is also requesting funds from the Friends of the Library to create some small meeting rooms, approximately 12 by 20-ish meeting spaces with the table, charging stations, and HDMI connectivity, so folks can maximize that space there. And that should actually begin tomorrow, working on some of that prelim work and hopefully complete it in October. So this is fast-moving, and that is my report.
Thank you, Marwan. Appreciate the enthusiasm from you as well. I don't know if I've ever been so excited about asphalt repair, but that's fantastic. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, so we'll go to 7.04, Financial Report. Dan, do you have anything to share beyond what is in the report?
We're typing on target. I always like to throw that in, we certainly are. But I do want to have a late-breaking development that we heard, I heard from the State Auditor's Office today, and I thought I was scheduling our audit for this year. It was not. It was actually saying they revised the minimum amount of funding that we get that triggers a every-year audit. It's been raised, so they gave us the option of passing on our audit this year and having one next year. I, of course, refused and said, we want to go through it. And I said, no, I did not. So we get a pass this year on our audit. I don't know, after the levy's calculation is finalized and it goes in for 2026, we may be back in an every-year audit. But for at least this year, we do get to, we get a buy for this year. So any questions on the report or the lack of an audit?
All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
We'll go to 7.05, Jason with the Library Director's Report.
Yes, back again. July was a busy month, as you might have known from the report from Marwan and as well as all the summer activities. So as summer hit full stride, really, the library was out in full force at the aforementioned festivals in July. It's really an opportunity for the library to show what it's made of. I mean, obviously, it's all centered around youth and reading and learning goals, but also adults participate, teens participate, and you really get to see the library again on full display in terms of the library being mobile, right? Out at events, programs galore, free lunches happening in a lot of our locations. So it was just really good to see. So I mean, you could feel the buzz everywhere, you could feel the momentum, and that coupled with the fact that we were also celebrating our 80th year anniversary, I think made it even more special. And all the while, we had staff who were both participating in all of those programs and then volunteering their time after work to help out with the community campaign to help pass the levy. So definitely a lot of appreciation. The focus has been on that levy campaign for the entire summer, along with all of the other things going on. And staff and leadership have been doing all the things, you know, attending the events, doorbelling, engaging with the community ahead of that August 5th ballot, which you already know passed, and I'll get to that in a minute. So it's been really inspiring for me to see how people stepped up. My first opportunity going through this had no real sense of what to expect, other than getting out boots on the ground and doing the work. And so definitely feeling a lot of gratitude right now. I want to highlight a couple of examples of just how the summer went in terms of summer events. For me particularly, it was a busy summer going to ALA while also still showing up for the community, showing up for staff, and seeing staff out at all the things. I remember being at the Quincy Jones Square groundbreaking and seeing our staff represented there. Unfortunately, I missed Pride Fest, as I was in Portland and attended their Pride Fest in Portland. But while doing that, I think we entertained, that KSAP Pride entertained about 6,000 people, which our staff have continued to show up in full force to lead the charge in terms of having lots of activities for youth and adults alike. And so really proud of our partnerships for all of our summer programs and our summer events. And then we also continue to recognize our hard-working staff through our Elevate and Celebrate recognition process. Just a few examples of how our staff go above and beyond. There are examples of people just being completely inclusive and patient during conversations at Pride, for instance, or innovative programming that happens at Ways Goose. You know, not necessarily traditional program that one would think, but I like the fact of our system is that we're able to scale and adapt to what's needed for this county. And I think that's the magic of this library. It's not all out of a box. We're able to just kind of figure out what the community needs, where it shows up, and what it finds valuable, and we're also there to support. And so, and then the mentoring and modeling that happens amongst staff, those are some of the examples of why staff were recognized, and that's exactly what we want. We want staff mentoring each other. We want opportunities to have people coach, mentor, guide, and, you know, give others direction. On the numbers side, of course, summer is the busiest time in which door counts skyrocket, but also to Shannon's point earlier, you know, we've understood that coming back from the pandemic was going to be a process, and I'm sure that's been that way for all of libraries. But it is very gratifying to see how people have continued to show up and that the fact that we're now, I think, hitting new highs in terms of the engagement that we feel is super strong. July was our strongest month yet in terms of door count. Circulation continues to peak, you know, top 240,000 checkouts and renewals in July, which was up slightly from last year. But again, it just shows that I think the library's back to what it was before and even better. Again, programs, 286 events, 7,000 attendees, a huge jump from June, naturally because when summer hits in full, there were just programs galore. So really proud of the effort of our staff. And last but not least, of course, you know, I wanted to talk about what the passage of Proposition 1 on the ballot, which was our proposition, what does that mean for us? And I think, you know, the short story is, and I'll, we'll get to a more full-blown report, because next month, part of what our process is now as an organization is, of course, trying to allow ourselves the opportunity to celebrate. As I explained in the Long Range Strategic Planning Committee meeting, we haven't really gotten to the point of, I think, celebration yet, just because as a team, this team is so wired to what's next, and let's move on and set the library up for success. I think we have to allow ourselves an opportunity to sit back and figure out what we've accomplished, because I think for me individually, and I feel it with my team, but just my individual feelings are, we've been really preparing for this since day one. The board has prepared me for what our financial situation was like, what would be ahead, and certainly my leadership team prepared me for the notion that we'd be out within a couple of years of me starting. So now that the reality of that is here and we've passed, I don't know how to feel other than like, how do we now make good on those promises? And that's exactly where we're going next. And so it means for us, it's a solid foundation for growth, not necessarily in adding new people, buildings, or things, but growth in how we do business and how we operate as a library system for here on out. And so what does that mean for us? It means being able to keep the same hours. You know, people have found value in the fact that we have extended hours or we've gotten our hours back to pre-pandemic status. So being able to keep those restored hours long-term is a huge benefit to our community. Not only that, stable hours, no threat of closure, it just gives stability for all of our staff, and you can't beat that. Staff knowing that they have jobs, will be compensated, and have a job, you just can't put that into words, and that means a lot. I was often told how different this campaign felt from 2017, and obviously, the organization's in a different place, and that wasn't anything we did to make the campaign better or make it less stressful. I think it's just where the organization has gotten to with a lot of hard work from our leaders. And so it means stronger collections, collections that are refreshed and actually speak to what the community wants, what it needs, and the composition of our community and the various micro-communities that we're in. We need to reflect collections better to meet their needs. How do we expand our digital collections that, of course, now people are relying on? That will all be important to, you know, to talk about. And that's, quite frankly, what our process is as a leadership team now, is planning how to scale all of our ass, how to make sure that we can remain a library that'll be here not only 10 years from now, but the foundations of that will help in the next 80 years. And so as we kind of close out a year of celebration, it's also a year of reflection. It's a year to figure out how we can best serve the needs of not only the entire county, but in particular, how can we get to people who are underserved and have no opportunity to get to a library, have no opportunity to realize library services, and how do we improve upon the product that we already have? The aforementioned Summer Reading/Learning Program, how can we improve that? How can we improve our bread and butter? And how can we also make sure that the library is available for all the people who want to use it? And that's what we're planning. I really want to, in closing, thank the Board of Trustees for their full support, your full support in helping us and really endorsing this levy that we, to go out for, because as I said, it was a lot of work by a lot of different people to get here. I want to specifically call out the work of the leadership team to put this ass together, and not only to do that, but to also really help me and guide me in figuring out who to talk to and how to do it. Really want to thank, you know, Jeannie Allen, who's not here tonight, but was very instrumental in strategy behind getting out and making sure that we had a good plan moving forward to get out and pass the levy. A good staff plan was launched to have staff be educated and to arm them to be able to have the requisite information and be able to talk to patrons. We had a, just a really solid team to work on this levy. And so I'm really grateful, lastly, to the voters who came out and supported us. I think it was really a testament to the value that this library system has in this community. And we understand certainly why there were a number of folks who didn't vote, and a large part of it has to do with, you know, inability to shoulder any more taxes. And we recognize that, and we recognize that a vote no didn't mean a vote no for libraries, but maybe not now in terms of the support. But one of the things I felt, and it really was born out of working with the community campaign, volunteering after work and hitting up, like what you said, Monica, actually talking to residents and getting their perceptions of the library and what they felt about the library, and also feeling the love and support. It was just really gratifying that what we're doing now works, what we're doing now reaches people, and what we're doing now is impactful to the community. And if no other reason than the testimony we just had from Vanessa, because you can't make this stuff up. We didn't put this in her head to say, we wanted her to present because we thought that this was valuable, but I think it's just a testament to how impactful the library is through and through. So I'm grateful to the board, I'm grateful to our voters, I'm grateful to my leadership team and staff, who really, they're the reasons we passed this, and they're the reasons why we're set to have at least a stable budget for the next seven to 10 years. And looking for, to leave stable organizations to the next set of leaders, and that's ultimately what this gives us, is a stable product that we can, you know, keep developing, a stable set of practices and financial rules and all of that stuff to be able to pass to the next set of leaders. So I'm thankful, and I'm looking forward to sharing more with you next month. Of course, after we meet and retreat, we'll have more data around how this looks in '26. So having said that, that's the end of my report. I will take any questions from the board.
Thank you, Jason, for the update. And you and I had discussed, there's the comment, you could tell from the margin of victory that it was, it was an effort that went beyond party lines. It was really about community and not about a political party. And I think one of the things that also helps is that the library walks the walk every day due to the staff providing services and people knowing what the library does, and then we could share that it does even more. So it's, as we talk about in every meeting, it's the service of the staff and the dedication of the community that really drives home the value of the library. So I echo your sentiments and the excitement over the levy. I'll open it up to anybody else who has any comments or questions.
I'll just piggyback on what you were saying. My request would be that you always give us some stats every month, and I think people miss out on the
And I think people miss out on the fact that, and maybe my numbers are off here, but I'm looking here at your report and it says in July, 85,000 visits, which is almost 90,000. There's nine branches, that's about 10,000 per branch. And you divide that out, that's about 330 visits per day, per branch. That's impressive. And I think that just, those numbers go unsaid. That's just in-person door count, right? So with all the things that the library is doing out in advance and mobile, that's just a big deal. So those are huge numbers to me.
I agree and I didn't mean to undersell them. I wanted, I wanted to get to the levy, but I mean, it's a real, it's a testament again to all the folks who show up and, and do the work. It's work I miss and live vicariously through the folks who are doing it. But I just want to give kudos to the public services staff too because, you know, they're the face of the library. We all know that. We all get to sit back and, and do the administrative stuff, which can, you know, it, it's fun, but it's not as fun as reading a story. It's not as fun as, as flying foam around at a foam party as we, as we discuss, but, and we get the opportunity to enjoy it, showing up to support events. We were out this weekend supporting Wendy, myself, Shannon was out during midweek and Tammy supporting the fair and that was lovely to do. We had so much engagement. I think just in a couple of years, a couple hours I was out, I think we hit up at least 200 people or they hit us up. So yeah, I agree. I think, you know, the numbers are a testament that people definitely come to libraries. So any of the rhetoric we hear about, are libraries still valid? We know that is discredited by the numbers that I am reporting every month because libraries are very much relevant today, as relevant if not more than, than, than yesterday. So thank you.
I just want to recognize a comment that you made in regards to the levy and those who might not have voted for it. And I think it's really important that, that we continue to engage with those users and listen to them and recognize what it is and the reasons why. And, and yes, lots of times it could have been, just not now, but also, you know, new insight is provided and sometimes there's some really great ideas and thoughts of ways that we can expand the library or, or, you know, shift and change and evolve based on the ideas of those who might not have, support isn't the right word, but it's what I'm going to use now just because. And so I really excited, am excited to know that, that that ongoing dialogue still continues to happen with those residents of our, of our community as well. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you so much, everyone. And with that, we will go to future meeting dates. Our next board meeting is Tuesday, September 23rd. And with that, thank you very much, everyone. That concludes our meeting.